The October 27, 2020 meeting of the Marion County School Board is called to order. Vice Chair Thor, could you give us our motto?
Certainly. We are the Marion County School District Governance Team. If we choose one word to describe us, it would be student-centered because student success is our mission. When we come together to work, we are efficient, effective, and productive. Our three most important characteristics are dedicated, transparent, and individually responsible. To work well together, we must demonstrate respect, confront reality, and be accountable. We will always put students first. We will leave a legacy of success.
Thank you. Before we proceed tonight, we all know that we had a tragic event in our community on Sunday in the passing of our beloved Police Chief Greg Graham. So I want us to have a moment of silence prior to us starting tonight's meeting in honor of him. Thank you. I want you to do something for me as a community. Please continue to pray for his family, but as well the Ocala Police Department and all the law enforcement agencies in Marion County. He's a friend, and he's going to be missed. So, thank you. For the courtesy of those listening to the meeting, I'm requesting everyone in the audience to please remove your hats and turn off your electronic devices or put them on vibrate. Later in the meeting, up to 30 minutes will be provided for individuals to address the board on matters concerning the operation of the Marion County School System or the school board only. Presentations to the board are limited to five minutes and are televised. If you wish to address the board regarding a regular agenda item or matters on which the board customarily takes action, you must first complete a peach form located on the table in the hallway. If you wish to address the board regarding a public hearing or a student discipline matter, please complete a line green form. These forms must be fully completed and received by the board secretary no later than 5:40 PM. The procedures applicable for each on a separate sheet of paper. Madam Secretary, please call the roll.
Mrs. Nancy Stacy, District 1. Mrs. Beth McCall, District 2. Mrs. Kelly King, District 5. Mrs. Nancy Thor, District 4. Mr. Eric Cummings, District 3. Dr. Diane Gullett, Superintendent. Ms. Suzanne Green, School Board Attorney.
Mr. Mark Ingram, Program Specialist, Secondary Curriculum Instruction, please introduce who will be providing us with inspiration and pledge tonight.
Good evening, Board Chair Cummings, Vice Chair Thor, members of the board, Dr. Gullett, Attorney Green, and Mrs. Martinez Lopez. I'm excited to be here tonight to introduce the winners of the Bridges Project Essay Contest. The mission of the Bridges Project Ocala Marion County is to break through barriers among racial and social groups and individuals in Marion County and to build pathways to understanding for the reduction and elimination of conflict. Representing them here tonight are Reverend Peggy Hostetler and retired Principal Patricia Keith. This year, students were asked to write about what liberty and justice for all means to them in the Pledge of Allegiance and in the Declaration of Independence. Both winners will be awarded $100 Barnes &amp; Noble gift card from the Bridges Project. Middle school winner Jenna Lapuma is a student in Ms. Pamela Ernest's class at Howard Middle School from which 13 entries were submitted. The number of entries was so significant that the Bridges Project designated an award for the entire class and for Mrs. Ernest. High school winner Imani Lindsay is a student in John Gibbs' class at Lakewood High School. She also won an award in the middle school category last year. She will now share an excerpt from her essay.
Inable rights are rights that cannot be taken away or denied. This law was created in 1976, the same year Thomas Jefferson wrote "All men were created equal." But look back in the South at the 1800s. Take another look in the 1950s. Clearly, these inable rights were never a thing for people of color or minority group for that matter. The same people who fought in wars for this country, who pledged to the same American flag, who have proven their loyalty to America, and yet we are not considered equal, or how Thomas Jefferson declared "created equal." Color people have had to fight and struggle for too long for equality when it should have been given from the birth of this country. Even the Native Americans should have not had to fight for their rights and equality in a country they themselves lived in before colonization and settlements arrived. There should have never been a rebellion for a country they were born in first. For decades to now, groups like Black Lives Matter, feminist organizations, and the LGBT community are still fighting for their equality, not only in the federal system, but in American society as well. Justice is still yet to be served for these people. Immigrants who come to this country for religious freedom, a chance of life, and protection for their families are also struggling to be seen as equals, such as exiles of a third-world country or people who are escaping famine and genocide. An important figure that reminds me of the Pledge of Allegiance is the former NFL quarterback Colin Kaepernick. When he took a knee during the pledge, it became a controversial topic and infuriated many Americans, but enlightened us as well. He opened the eyes of American people and made us realize the lack of justice for minorities. When Thomas Jefferson wrote, "Indoed by the Creator with certain inable rights, that among these are life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness." Minorities in America do not get to cherish their life, their liberty, nor the pursuit of happiness from the very start we were brought into this country.
Thank you, Imani. And now Jenna will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Wait, 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 wait.
Get your run away that fast.
Come on back, Imani and Jenna. Mr. Ingram, thank you, and thank you to the Bridges Project for doing this essay contest every year. Young ladies, we appreciate, we truly appreciate and are excited about what you guys are doing and the success that you had in the essay contest. Keep writing, keep reading, keep speaking the truth, keep speaking life into situations that seem to be hopeless, but they're not hopeless. As long as we have people, kids like you, that are coming behind us, things are going to get better. So I do want to thank you for what you're doing. Thank you, young ladies. Are their parents, are their parents here?
Their parents are here.
Y'all come and take a picture with them. Y'all come on up, guys. Y'all come on up, ladies.
Hi, Mrs. King.
I would, I would simply like to present them with their awards, the $100 gift certificates. May I do that? I thought you'd like this pink one, Jen.
Goes with her outfit.
And this is for your class.
Oh, my gosh.
Oh, yay.
And listen, let me say this too, for you, for your whole class, 13 kids out of the class, that's, that's because you were pushing that they would do something.
I made them all do it, sure.
I know Mr. Rembert is over there just tickle pink under that mask because his school is being recognized, but we thank you guys. And y'all come up, take a picture.
Miss King, come on up with him. And the Bridges. Mask on or off?
Yeah, you had them shoulders above everywhere, the rest of them. But hold your breath, hold your breath.
Thank you so much for your time, board members.
Thank you.
Bye-bye. Thanks for all you do.
Keep doing it, keep doing it. Madam Superintendent.
Thank you, Chairman Cummings, members of the board. I recommend approval of the agenda for the October 27, 2020 School Board Meeting with the materials in the board packet. Those materials distributed to board members at the meeting and the audio recording included as part of the official record of the meeting, with the exception of Item D 23.1 that has been placed under discussion.
May I have a motion on the superintendent's recommendation?
So moved.
Moved by Ms. Thor.
Second.
Seconded by Ms. McCall. All in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Aye, unanimous. May I have a motion to approve the minutes of the August 6, 2020 Administrative Briefing and Work Session?
A move.
Moved by Ms. McCall, seconded by Ms. King. Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes? Any discussion? All in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
May I have a motion to approve the minutes for the August 11, 2020 School Board Meeting?
So moved.
Moved by Ms. Thor.
Second.
Seconded by Ms. McCall. Are there any additions or corrections to the minute? Any discussion? All in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Aye, unanimous. May I have a motion to approve the minutes for the August 13, 2020 Administrative Briefing and Work Session? Moved by Ms. King.
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Thor. Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes? Any discussion? All in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
May I have a, unanimous, may I have a motion to approve the minutes for the August 20, 2020 Administrative Briefing and Work Session?
A move.
Moved by Ms. McCall, seconded by Ms. King. Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes? There being none, all in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Aye, unanimous. May I have a motion to approve the minutes for the August 25, 2020 School Board Meeting?
A move.
Moved by Ms. Thor.
Second.
Seconded by Ms. King. Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes? There being none, all in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Aye, unanimous. May I have a motion to approve the minutes for the September 3, 2020 Administrative Briefing and Work Session?
So moved.
Moved by Ms. Thor, seconded by Ms. King. Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes? There being none, all in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Unanimous. May I have a motion to approve the minutes for the September 8, 2020 School Board Meeting?
A move.
Moved by Ms. McCall.
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Thor. Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes? There being none, all in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Unanimous. Ms. Judith Zanetti, Public Education Foundation Chair, would you like to, would like to recognize a new business partner who's in Marion County Public Schools?
Thank you, Reverend Cummings, and it's so great to be here again. It's been a little while since I've been here to do recognitions. But don't think for a minute that our community has stopped coming forward to support our schools, our students, and our teachers because they have not. So we've got a few recognitions over the next couple of months that we need to catch up on. Things that have happened between March, when schools closed, and today. So I'm going to start with our friends from Advent Health, and Advent Health came forward and partnered with not one, but two of our high schools. So we also have Principal Heather Guest and Principal Chris Carlisle with us from Bellevue and Vanguard High School. So would you all please come forward? This partnership happened a while ago, and as a matter of fact, they all already have their certificates and they're hanging on their walls. But I wanted to bring them forward because I know that you believe in recognizing those in our community that support our schools. And Advent Health definitely fits that category. They do a lot for us as well as partnering with two of our high schools, as I mentioned. So they have already established a great working relationship at both of these high schools, and the work has been continuing over the last several months. So I'll ask Mr. Carlisle if he would like to come forward.
I would. We are very fortunate to have Advent Health on board as a business partner. They've been great business partners. Anytime I'd email or pick up the phone, they're always there to help. Just a couple of examples, they supplied 1,600 water bottles for our students. They've been instrumental in helping our allied health program with, with new supplies. So we're, we're just very, very lucky to have them on board and we're blessed. Thank you.
Mrs. Guest?
I'm gonna ditto that. They've done everything we've asked them to do, and they've come in and had some great conversations even with our host of teachers and everything. So we're looking forward to the continued partnership. Some of the things that we planned for the spring didn't happen, so we're trying to work those out and try to figure out how to get the kids back in there and continue our partnership. So thank you all. It's been great.
And from, we've got several representatives from Advent Health, but I'd like to introduce you to Ms. Faye Peraza. And Ms. Peraza will introduce her, her guests, and she'll speak a little bit to the business partnerships as well.
Thank you so much for the privilege. Good evening, Faye Peraza, AVP of Human Resources at Advent Health Ocala. Truly, it is a privilege to partner with Ms. Zanetti and Mr. Carlisle, Mrs. Guest, with being able to provide an opportunity and an outlet for our team, for our students. We look forward to continuing to build the relationships and the partnerships and be a source of, of support to our, our students, which really will be our future. Really, all thanks and gratitude goes to Ashley Dollar, who is our Director of Rehab and Wellness, Sports Medicine at Advent Health Ocala. Tressa Mayer, who is our Education Coordinator, and Natalie McCombe, who is our Marketing Manager, Public Relations and Community Relations Leader. So truly, I cannot, it's really them that's been really partnering and having a presence at our school system. And we look forward again to continuing to have that relationship and building that in the future.
Thank you. We look forward to continuing to work with you and Advent Health as well. We appreciate your time and being here this evening. We know, board members, that the work you do here is important, and I'm so excited to be able to continue to recognize those that support your work and, and our work collectively. And so now I'm going to call up Ms. Heather Lepira from Saddlewood Elementary School, and I think with her is her Assistant Principal, Dr. Smithies. And we have two business partners to recognize for Saddlewood this evening, and I'm also going to call up the Public Education Foundation Board President, Mr. Wally Wagner. Mr. Wagner is going to help us with some certificates this evening. So we are going to start with our friends from E1, and you may notice that they have already left you a mask, and Ms. Thor, thank you for putting that on. So we are, we are blessed that E1 has come forward to partner with Saddlewood. I know that Ms. Lepira was looking for a business partner for some time, and she was quite dogged in finding one, and she not only found one, she found two. So I'm going to let her speak to that first, and then we'll introduce our guests from E1.
Thank you. I'm excited to partner with Colin Barrett from Edward Jones. We talked last year, and right before we shut down, we actually met, and we talked about the partnership and what do we want to do for our students and our families and teaching them some good money habits and how to teach students how to save. So bringing him on and partnering with him, so I'm excited about that. And then E1 contacted me a few, what, a couple of months ago? And they wanted to partner with me as well, our school as well, and support our students, and we want them, our students, to learn the career opportunities that are in our community. And what a great place to start with E1. So we're excited to have them. So I have two business partners, and I haven't had one in, what, three years? So I'm so excited. So thank you.
Would you like to say a few words on behalf of E1?
Sure.
And you can introduce your team that's here with you.
Sure. My name is Maisha Bernard. I am one of the HR journalists at E1. This is also Lindsay Harris. She's also a journalist too at E1. When we were given the opportunity with our Employee Activities Committee to sponsor a school, they jumped at the opportunity, and we are more than happy to provide them anything. Anytime we call her, we're like, Heather, send up the list. Heather, what else do your teachers need or your students need? So we definitely want to be able to support the school in however we can. So it's definitely a big opportunity. I know a few weeks ago, we had extra smoothies, like, all week long, so we got the opportunity and gave the school smoothies just about every day that week to make sure the teachers had something cool and refreshing to have at school. We gave them masks and school supplies as well. So anything that we can do to try to support the community as well as Saddlewood Elementary School, we're definitely jumping at the opportunity to do so. So we thank you for that and look forward to the continued partnership with Saddlewood Elementary School with Heather.
Thank you.
Thank you. And Mr. Wagner has a certificate for Saddlewood, for the office, and one for E1. And Mr. Barrett, I didn't forget you. I just hadn't gotten to you yet. So the second business partner with Saddlewood? Yep, yep, they're both the same. They're both the same. One, one goes to, one goes to the school. The second business partner with Saddlewood is Edward Jones Financial and Mr. Colin Barrett. And I will say, both with, with Edward Jones and E1, both of them contacted me and said, hey, we want to be business partners with Saddlewood. And so those are the phone calls and emails that I don't get that often, but I love when they happen. Mr. Barrett, would you like to say a few words?
So I'm Colin Barrett, Edward Jones. Don't have anything cool like E1 and Advent, but I'm looking forward to, you know, Heather and I coming up with some cool stuff. Heather and I also went to middle school and high school together. So I've known her for quite a long time, so I was very excited to partner with her, especially when she told me she didn't have a business partner. I said, well, you know, I can do that. So here we are, and I'm happy and privileged to be here and looking forward to a long partnership with Saddlewood and Marion County School System. So, thank you.
Okay, and Mr. Wagner has certificates for you all. It's just like being home again, isn't it? Thank you all very much for allowing us time on your agenda this evening.
Don't go, don't go, y'all. Y'all ready to run.
I know. I hope Advent's still out there.
Yeah, y'all ready to run, and Advent was gone, and I'm sure you guys had something to say as well. Ms. McCall?
Thank you for partnering with our schools. You know, as we look at our CTE programs, one of the best things we can do is have business partners that are, that are in our schools, working with our students about good work ethic, about good citizenship, and so we thank you so much for all that you do for our schools because you add that icing to the cake that we can't always afford to do. So thank you.
Yes, and, and you're never too young, in my humble opinion, to learn about finance and career options. So it's wonderful that our students are getting your knowledge at, at such a young age comparatively. And Advent, if you're still out there.
They're coming. They are out there.
They are out there, okay. Well, I'll just say thank you to them very much as well. I feel like every board meeting almost, there's a donation from Advent being acknowledged. I think they also do our fans, Fitness and Nutrition, which I'm a huge fan of, and have toured Vanguard's huge greenhouse, and, and it's just incredible. It's such a partnership with the community, and thank you so much, all of you.
I want to thank you for everything that you do for our schools. You know, I don't know how the big cities do it, but at least in our city, you're, we're small enough yet that you can have, you can come to some of the events that the schools have and you can be involved. And so thank you so much for just being part of our children's lives. You just never know. Children are always looking up to you, and they're always watching you. So thank you.
And I echo what my fellow board members said, and as I was sitting here and listening, I was just thinking how wonderful it is that we have such great community support. So thank you so much.
I was, I was thinking the same thing. It's, it's good to be able to have community partner, business partners that we see as we ride around town. We see E1. We know where the hospital is. We know where Edward Jones is. So she must have been good to you when she was in middle school. She was nice to you. You must not have pulled her hair or nothing. Because you can come back years later and ask you to be a partner. Listen, we truly thank you guys for the support that you give our students. And it's, as, as Ms. McCall said, it's a win-win situation because some of these kids will stay home and some will go and come back. And they will end up as working in Advent or at Jones or at E1. So thank y'all so much for what you're doing. And please continue. We got some more schools if you want some more. We, we will welcome, we'll give you all you want. So, but thank you so much.
So Reverend Cummings, Ms. Zanetti, how many schools do we have that still need business partners? Let's get that out there. Somebody may be out there that wants to be a partner.
I think that right now we have seven, and I believe they're all elementary schools. So all of our middle and high schools are now taken care of, but we have a few elementary schools still on the list. And we did lose one because the business closed during the pandemic, but we have, we've continued to gain.
And that was the other thing that I thought about. Even in the midst of a pandemic where businesses are closing and shutting their doors, you guys are still being, giving back to the community, giving back to the kids, to the schools. So thank you. So the Bible says, we have not because we ask not. So we need seven business partners for those. At least seven, at least seven.
We're the last partner to come on board. We're having trouble finding a date to schedule with them for a recognition, but they took our last high school. So Signature Brands is now partnering with Shady Hill Elementary.
Good. Good, good. So we're looking for some business partners. The door's open. Thank you so much. Thank you, Ms. Zanetti, for what you do with the Public Education. All now, it's the School Board should train to explain the rules governing persons who wish to address the School Board tonight.
In compliance with Section 286.0114 Florida statutes, the School Board has adopted uniform procedures for public speakers who wish to speak at tonight's meeting either with regard to one of tonight's agenda items or a matter relating to the operations of the school district. These procedures will ensure the public has a reasonable opportunity to be heard on school board and school district matters. A written summary of these procedures is available from the table in the hallway. Public speaker forms are also located on the same table. The completed forms were due to the School Board Secretary no later than 5:40 PM. Tonight's speakers will be called prior to the business portion of the School Board Meeting and the order of receipt by the School Board Secretary. Before you begin speaking, please state your full name and address for the record and spell your last name. Each speaker will have five minutes of time. However, if there are more than five persons who wish to speak, the board may seek consensus to limit each speaker's time to three minutes. When the speaker has one minute remaining, the speaker will receive a visual notice from me to complete his or her comments. Speakers may not yield their time to others. Speakers and meeting attendees are expected to conduct themselves in a respectful manner. Verbal attacks and profanity are strictly prohibited. Pursuant to the procedures for public comments, Item 6, speakers are not to identify specific individuals other than themselves or their child unless the statement is provided 24 hours in advance. If there are matters dealing with student discipline to include expulsions, they will be scheduled at the conclusion of the televised portion of this meeting. Parents may address the board with regard to a discipline matter at that time. To ensure student privacy, only a parent or guardian may use a student's first or last name. Identifying references to or identification of other students and/or their families is also strictly prohibited. Thank you.
We have two speakers. Ms. Kelly Myers.
Good evening. My name is Kelly Myers, M-Y-E-R-S. I live at 7770 Southeast 41st Court, Ocala, Florida, 34480. I am here due to the postgraduate for ESE students. Up until last year, postgraduate ESE students stayed at their base school. As of last year, they have now been moved over to MTI in a closed setting. And this is not beneficial to our students. We are at MTI. They have, last I saw was 300 students, you know, on campus at any given, you know, in two different time slots. So you have 150 students that, you know, for an hour and 45 minutes and 150 students for, in an afternoon session. Per the LRE provision from the IDA, Individuals with Disabilities Education Act, the LRE provision must maximize opportunities for the student to interact with non-disabled peers. By moving our students over to MTI, they are not being able to engage with non-disabled peers. They are being segregated over to MTI. Currently, there are only 15 postgraduate students in the program over there. Our base schools were more than adequate to handle the experiences that these young adults needed. My child goes to Vanguard High School. Ms. Traviosa was the 2016, you know, Teacher of the Year. She had business partners with Pizza Hut, Publix. They worked in the cafeteria. She got grants and upstarted that greenhouse that was mentioned earlier. They had shadowed the school in Elatua County from farm to table to the school. They were in place to do those things, and it was all ripped away from them. They also had two ornamental plant sales every year where they raised, you know, a ton of money. Like, her classroom has roughly about $20,000 in her bank account that these students of, of, the ESE students have earned and raised themselves. They are completely self-sufficient. And to take these students and then send them over and segregate them into a school where they might come into contact with 150 students is, is insane. And federally, you know, it states that you must keep our ESE students in with the most non-disabled people they can. When they're over there, they can no longer go to lunch within general population. They're out of assemblies with general population. You know, and on paper, that program seems good, but it's not functional. You have, currently, they have five teachers over there with 15 students, and due to COVID, they're not now allowed to go off of campus to work in outside job opportunities, the CBVT. And of the, of the And of the, of the businesses I asked that they went to, they can never give me a name of a business that they were partnered with, and from my understanding, it is a detailed process to partner with the business, with the school. So, how does the director not know the businesses that they were partnered with? I get a general, oh, well, they go to the church, they go to the businesses in the strip mall, but, you know, on the boulevard. No concrete businesses, I don't know of any relationships, and now due to COVID, they can't go out, so they're shredding paper in the ESE office, or they're, you know, shadowing a custodian, when if they were in their home school, they would have a lot more opportunities to be involved with the general population. The goal of a parent of an ESE child is to make it so that they can be productive in our society, not to hide them away in a school with 150 students. I mean, and not only that, but it's beneficial for your regular ed students to learn how to be around and see that they're not freaks, that they're just normal people with a little differences, and by moving them over to that school is an injustice to our children. I, I mean, it's, it's just, it's wrong. I mean, and they, and per the curriculum for the state, you know, we're not using the on-the-job training. There is a curriculum from the state for our ESE kids for on-the-job training. Marion County is not using that, you know? The class is called the Class Experience, where they go out into the, into the public, you know, and learn to do. I mean, Ms. T has a life skills lab there where they learn how to do their own laundry, cook, clean, they go to the gym every day for exercising, she had the greenhouse where they were working in the greenhouse independently, I mean, and that is a career that a special needs person can do if they don't like large groups. You work with the plants, and to take this away is, is unfair to our students. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Myers. Did you guys know anything, do we know anything about that?
I don't, that's, I, I don't know anything about that. Dr. Gullett?
No, Chairman Cummings, members of the Board, if Mr. Vianello could step out and meet with Ms. Myers briefly would help us.
Thank you.
I'm not aware of this at all, so.
Thank you.
If we could follow up, thank you.
Can I just state, and also, the district never notified us that our students would be going over to this program.
Wait, 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 wait. When did this happen?
It, it was instituted last year, so this is the second year that it's in place.
Last, 2019, 2020?
2019, so, this is the second year it's in place at MTI.
I didn't know that.
We didn't know anything, this.
Right, and that's, that's, I, I found out because I am, you know, very cordial with my son's teacher, and I said, oh, well, postgraduate, she's like, oh, no, and Dr. Albe is the one who put this in place.
Mr. Vianello will talk with you, and he'll get, get back to us on it.
Okay.
Because we want, we want to know.
Thank you for coming to us.
Yes.
Thank you.
Ms., hold on, hold on, Ms. Thor.
And, and we had met, I think it was last year, yes, so it's nice to see you again, and, and you're referencing our students that are over the age of 18, typically are 18 to 22-year-olds, correct?
Correct. But per this, you know, federal guidelines, 7 to 22.
Question, was, was this supposed to be like a, a hub? Was this supposed to be one of those hub-type things?
No, no, it was intended to provide postgraduate experiences that students couldn't get on campus, and to be able to begin to integrate them into the workforce and be around peers that were actually their age, you know, rather than staying in a high school setting that they had been in for four years, and what had happened in the past, without going into too much detail, but a lot of times, these students were basically retaking the same classes that they had been taking since ninth grade, because at that time, you were allowed to have a, a long period of time.
Right, right.
To master.
Right.
Those different activities. So, there is a lot to this, and run, run in a way that really is meaningful, it's, can be an amazing opportunity, but I will defer to Mr. Vianello, but thank you for coming, and I-
If you're pressed to be able to stay at their base school.
Yes, ma'am.
So, why shouldn't our students be able to stay at their base school? We feel as though it's a better program.
Thank you.
Understood.
Well, Mr. Vianello will get the details on that one. Thank you.
Ms. Vicki Trulieb?
Hello, my name is Vicki Trulieb, I reside at 4700 Southeast 33rd Avenue, Ocala, Florida, 34480, P-R-E-U-L-I-E-B. Please forgive my attire, I came straight from work, it's homecoming week, and today was Disney Day, so, go Cats. I come here tonight to speak to you about the impasse that we're at regarding salary negotiations. I would speak to you on November 11th, when this comes before you, but I have an obligation to my students to be present at a dress rehearsal for a theatrical performance that they have for the upcoming weekend. I've been a teacher in Marion County for 12 years. I love my job. I adore my students and watching them grow into young adults. My day doesn't end when the kids walk out the door. I'm frequently at school late, coaching academic team, running theater rehearsals, and whatever else I need to do. When I go home, kids still often communicate with me through my email and my remind to clarify assignments, or just to discuss the books they're reading, which is great, add to this grading and planning for the next day, and you can see, I'm fully invested in my job, the job I love, but the job that doesn't always seem to love me. You've stated how hard teachers work and how we deserve so much, but when it comes time to actually show that, your actions certainly speak louder than your words. I understand that the Florida government has put you in a difficult place where you must offer a teacher who has never taught before as close to $47,500 as possible, leaving those of us who make near that amount already with little room for salary growth. You tell me I'm valuable, but it doesn't feel that way. You can take your pat on the back and put it aside, because it's time to invest in teachers in Marion County who have been here for you, doing everything that you've asked for so long. I've worked hard to be highly effective so that my raises can come, compound. I've worked hard to develop my craft by taking classes and developing creative lesson plans. I've shared and taught other teachers so that they could better their craft. I've taught various classes because it's what's best for kids or the school. But now someone who has never done any of that is going to make the same amount of money as I am. Where's the fairness in that? It doesn't exist. How do you think your staff is going to feel? But you can help alleviate that punch. I'm asking that I'm valued at least as much this year as I was last year, that my colleagues who have gone through hell and back since this pandemic has started are valued at least this much this year as they were last year. Now is the time to say that we value the teachers in Marion County. Now is the time for you to make the difference to those who are on the front lines making a difference for others. Now is the time to put your money where your mouth is. With the dozens of vacancies that currently exist, you have probably already saved enough money this year to cover the difference of impasse. So, it's not that you don't have the money, it's just that you don't want to invest it in the people who have invested so much time in you. Thank you.
Any others?
That's it.
We have a motion to adopt the new COVID-19 mandatory face mask coverings policy, 8.90.
Some move.
Moved by Ms. McCall.
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Thor.
The new COVID-19 mandatory face mask coverings Board Policy 8.90 is in compliance with Florida Statute 1001.43 that states that each district School Board shall adopt program and policies to ensure appropriate responses to emergency situations.
I declare a public hearing. Is there anyone present who wishes to address the new COVID-19 mandatory face mask coverings Board Policy 8.90? There being none, all in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Aye, unanimous. May I have a motion to adopt the 2020-2021 Student Progression Plan?
Some moved.
Moved by Ms. Thor.
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Stacy. Superintendent?
The 2021, 2020, 2021 Student Progression Plan will reflect the changes in legislation in order to be in compliance with Florida Statute 1008.25, and to clarify language concerning student progression in Marion County.
I declare a public hearing. Is there anyone present who wishes to address the 2020-2021 Student Progression Plan? None. No discussion, all in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Aye, unanimous. May I have a motion to amend Board Policy 4.21 Instructional Materials?
Some move.
Moved by Ms. McCall, seconded by Ms. King. Superintendent?
Board Policy 4.21 Instructional Materials will be amended to reflect the Marion County Public Schools' following the State of Florida Instructional Materials Adoption Cycle.
I declare a public hearing. Is there anyone present who wishes to address the amendment to Board Policy 4.21 Instructional Materials? There being none in the discussion, all in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Aye, unanimous. May I have a motion to approve Consent Agenda Item C 9.1 through C 21.3, with the exception of D 23.1 that is under discussion?
Some moved.
Moved by Ms. King.
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Thor. All in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Aye. May I have a motion to approve a version upgrade from Board Docs Pro to Board Docs Pro Plus?
Some move.
Moved by Ms. King, seconded by Ms. McCall. Any discussion? All in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Aye, unanimous. May I have a motion to approve the following cash or tangible donations that have a total value of $45,348.35?
Some moved.
$1,000 to Donella Middle School from Grant for Great Ideas, $9,500 to Donella Middle School from Marion County Hospital District, Sneeze Guards valued at $3,715.78 to Evergreen Elementary School from Donut Shoes, Wobble Chairs valued at $8,957.28 to Evergreen Elementary School from Donut Shoes, $3,175.29 to Hillcrest Public Center from Rack Room Shoes, Paper, Spiral Notebooks Binders Non-Consumables valuable at, valued at $1,000 to Lakewood High School from Kingdom of the Sun Chapter MOAA, $2,500 to Lakewood High School from their business partner Lockheed Martin via the Public Education Foundation of Marion County, $2,500 to Lakewood Middle School from their business partner Ocala Fiber Network via the Public Education Foundation of Marion County, $2,500 to Marion Oaks Elementary from their business partner Ocala Fiber Network via the Public Education Foundation of Marion County, $2,500 to Marion Technical Institute from their business partner Signature Brand via the Public Education Foundation of Marion County, $2,500 to North Marion Middle School from their business partner Ocala Fiber Network via the Public Education Foundation of Marion County, $2,000 to Oak Crest Elementary School from Building a Prosperous Florida, $2,500 to Oak Crest Elementary School from Alpha Rehab and Spine Strengthening, $1,000 to Shady Hill Elementary School from their business partner Paddock Mall Chick Filet via the Public Education Foundation of Marion County. No motion.
I'll second.
It was our, that's right, it was moved by Ms., Ms. Thor, seconded by Ms. McCall. Any discussion? All in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Aye, unanimous. Ms. Stacy?
Yes, I would like to thank the community. We've, you know, we've talked about our business partners tonight, and how we pass them on the road, we pass them in the stores, we see them in the, in the grocery stores, and, and we have a, a relationship with our business partners, and then, for our community to give money to our schools that we heard a teacher talking tonight about, things are, they, they stretch the dollar as far as they can, and when our people in the community give money to our schools and donate to our teachers and, and different things, it does show a level of appreciation for those in our community, and I want to thank you so much, because it's nice to be appreciated, especially our teachers, because sometimes we really can't pay them what they're worth, because what they're worth is the sky to our children, so thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Stacy. The next regular administrative briefing and work session is scheduled for November 5th, 2020, at 9:00 AM. The purpose of the work session is to discuss academic school data updates, student transitions and interventions, and MCPS Online second semester. The following administrative briefing and work session is scheduled for November 19th, 2020, at 9 o'clock AM. The purpose of the work session is to discuss the 2021 stop-loss and 2021 plan year updates in district-wide attendance zones, Evergreen and Oak Crest. Ms. Elena Martinez-Lopez.
December 3rd work session, we have at this time three board members that will be attending virtual, a conference, possibly four, with our new board member. We only have at that time one topic, construction project update. I have reached out to Mr. Knight, he said we can put that on the January 7th work session, so I just need to get a consensus from you all to cancel that one.
We have a conference virtually.
Yeah, the FIA conference is at the same time. Thank you.
Okay, so we have a consensus, okay. That's all I have, thank you.
That's it. Attorney Green?
Nothing, thank you.
Thank you, Attorney Green. Superintendent?
Thank you, Chairman Cummings, members of the Board, just briefly, I want to thank our partners, but especially, it brings me great joy to have our students here tonight. This is our, our core business, this is why we're here, so it's great to see them and thank them for their work, and thank everyone and their school teams, our teachers especially, and our parents. As we've transitioned, a lot of students are coming back. The last couple days I've been in schools, it has felt like the first day of school all over again. Lot of our students are moving back to schools, and we know that brings a lot of challenges to our school teams with readjusting class sizes, and so I just want to thank again publicly. And to the Board, I want to say that our teams are working really hard and try to adjust for that, so I thank everyone for their great care and patience and flexibility of, of doing what's best for our students.
Thank you. Ms. McCall?
Thank you. First of all, happy birthday, Ms. Elena Martinez-Lopez.
Thank you, thank you.
25, 25?
25.
25.
And you know, oftentimes, I leave our board meetings and workshops and really have to reflect on some of the discussions, and, and I just want to reflect a little bit on the discussion that we had about Sanford Harmony. I have no doubt it was the right move to make, but I've been thinking about, is it truly a curriculum that we need? Does Tier One instruction mean a curriculum? Or should we begin to find professional development to make it a culture in our school system? A culture of respect, a culture of good work ethic, a culture of being a good person to others regardless of their differences. So, Dr. Gullett and I had the conversation this morning, and we go, we go back and we talk about soft skills and those skills that are necessary to become good citizens. And I had a conversation with Mike Kelly this morning, and he's been talking to principals about soft skills, and what does that look like within your curriculum? And it's the same way with social and emotional learning. It should be a part of what we do, not necessarily something that we teach, we need our teachers to model it, we need to give them the tools that they need to help our children become those good citizens. And he says when he talks to principals about integrating those soft skills and integrating those skills into literature, math, he said, you know, when you're talking about characters in a book, let's talk about the soft skills that they used, or let's talk about the kindness, the respect that they had for others, or the lack thereof, and the consequences from that. So, I really want us to, to step back and really take a look at, what does that Tier One instruction mean? And shouldn't we really begin to look at making it the culture of Marion County Public Schools? Thank you.
Ms. Stacy?
Interesting thought, Ms. McCall, because something that, you know, to dovetail off of what she's saying, something that seems to be seriously missing since Facebook and, and some of the platforms came about is gratitude, just a lack of appreciation. There seems to be, with this culture of social media, everyone has a trophy, everyone's wonderful. to be with this culture of social media, everyone has a trophy, everyone's wonderful. Everyone's always trying to outdo the other person, it seems like. And to have a culture where people appreciate others and don't try to always be better than others and try to outdo others and try to respect the differences that we share. And so, that's a very interesting concept, Ms. McCall. And I think that our generation, we kind of lived the soft skills. We learned the soft skills. We learned them naturally in our homes and things. Most of us learned a lot of things that just, there's, everything's so busy now. We have to cram for FSA. We have to cram for this test. We have to, you know, there's all these deadlines we have to meet and everything. There just doesn't seem to be any time anymore for the skills that really help us to live a happy, fulfilled life. And so, that's an interesting idea. Thank you, Ms. McCall. What I wanted to talk about a little, just for a minute, was as we're talking about the new way we're gonna do the textbooks and everything, you know, and reviewing the state-required textbooks and everything, I would like to suggest as I leave that we have more parent involvement so that we don't get into these situations like we were in with this particular curriculum where a parent, this curriculum's been in the school a couple of years, and finally somebody came and told us that it's in the schools and we didn't even know it. And like Ms. King said, we can't reverse anything that was taught. And so, I think that we've always seemed to do the minimum. When, and I've been on this board for eight years, I've watched it, I've watched us do the minimum where it comes to the Code of Conduct Committee or textbook evaluations and things, where, okay, we're supposed to have parents, so we have one, you know. Or we're supposed to have a community member, we have one. I would like for y'all to consider our culture of opening this up more to the public. Because the more eyes reading these books, the more you're gonna catch this before it's gone on for two years, before we do have a parent that happens to catch it. Because we can't read every single word that's in every single book. But we have people that are interested in the different titles, the social studies and the civics and the different things, too, that would enjoy reading if they were certainly welcomed in and they weren't just a token parent or a token community member. If they were welcomed in, in a great number to review some of these textbooks before we do approve them, so that some of these things won't happen, or at least we would be made aware of some of the issues that maybe we need to address. So, that's kind of what I'd like to leave y'all with, that thought. So that we include more people in Code of Conduct, we include more people in our textbook adoption. And not always just do the minimum where it comes to the public, but do more than the minimum. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Stacy. Ms. King?
Yeah, I'm also gonna answer a little bit to what Ms. McCall brought up. If you can recall to last Thursday, I brought up Senate Bill 7030, and I asked for a legal opinion because I was told that, you know, we needed that Tier One implemented in our curriculum. And so, that's why I did ask for that legal opinion, because I agree, you know. Does it really need for us to have a curriculum that is embedded in our social studies program or whatnot? So, there's, I think we're trying to search out that legal opinion on that. And you are correct, there's examples all day long of how to behave and act. And there's also non-examples throughout this whole day that, you know, and I think we have some very competent teachers that, you know, in the past, I mean, that's what we did. I mean, not to say, you know, when we were the other, but that, so I wanted to touch.
Thank you is just such a nice word, two words. Thank you.
Please and thank you and stuff like that.
The forgotten words.
Forgotten words. So, and there's, you know, other things like I could think of, even when I was a classroom teacher, like we did a day on teaching about cultures, their family traditions. And the students would come in and tell about their traditions and their family. And they would even bring in their food and stuff like that. There's ways to get around this, you know, rather than having, you know, just a made-up program to come into Marion County and, you know. But I think we'll learn about that later on. And I just want to add, I just want to tell Ms. Elena Martinez-Lopez, happy birthday. And we are so glad that you were born. And I don't think people understand that there's a lot of work that comes behind when the board sits up here. Ms. Elena is very instrumental in making us look like we're doing a halfway good job up here. So, and Nicole too. But it's your birthday, so we'll talk to you. And that's all I had this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. King. Ms. Thor?
Thank you. Yes, happy birthday, Elena. You don't look any older than you did the last time I saw you. And it's important to celebrate our birthdays and those milestones because we certainly were reminded on Sunday how quickly what seemed so important all of a sudden pales in comparison to no longer being able to make any kind of decision or contribution. So, that's something that I certainly am keeping close to my heart. I didn't know Chief Graham all that well, but what I did know is that he was just a very approachable, really inclusive person who was always very kind to me. And those are certainly great traits as we're talking about these curriculums. And yes, I have some thoughts about that, too. You know, it gets pretty, it can get pretty academic and deep in the weeds, but it really is pretty simple. You know, Tier One Social Skills Curriculum are designed to give teachers a framework to teach social skills. But my understanding and the way I did it in the classroom was it was always embedded in my classroom procedures, you know. The expectations were clear, how we were going to be treating each other, building in those real-world applications. That's what helps kids understand how to function. And that's what builds those soft skills. And Sanford Harmony is a Tier One. When I was first elected to the school board, we were asked to approve, I think it was a hundred thousand dollar donation for second steps, which would not have replaced Sanford Harmony. That was, that's designed for a Tier Two-type intervention. And my experience with Sanford Harmony was limited to the fact, and this is important because as a school board, we rely on other experts in their fields, you know, to give us their input. And unless there are red flags that are given to us, then we go with it, especially when you have the Umbrella Organization Castle recommending it, especially when, you know, our own team and superintendent at the time, you know, was recommending it. So, there really wasn't anything outward that would have caused us to deny it. I wanted to deny the Tier Two Curriculum based on a similar premise, is that in the end, it is about real-time application, right? And embedding it in your classroom day. And that's why these well-intended curriculums, hopefully well-intended, all the way from top to bottom, end up gathering a lot of dust on closet shelves. Because teachers don't have time to teach things in isolation, you know. They have enough on their plates. And this isn't something that the community would be expected to know anything about. But I think it's important to make the distinction. The teachers are required to teach Tier One skills. How they do that really needs to, teachers need to have the latitude and also the confidence that they are going to set up their classrooms in a way that nurtures those kinds of skills. And so, that's my take on it. I just always kept it really simple in my classroom. And it's do what's right, do your best, treat others the way you want to be treated. And what that looks like in certain, in specific situations, then you talk about that, you know. Whether you're on the job, you certainly don't get to pick who you're gonna work with in this life. So, you have to learn to honor and value, you know, everybody. So, I'll look forward to more conversation about it. But I'm just a little bit too practical to think that, you know, we need something really expensive or even free. I think that we can focus on our soft skills and some other things that I'm interested to hear. And I loved hearing about the traditions that you did in your classroom and bringing in food, you know. Who doesn't like food? And high schoolers especially love food. And as a high school teacher, I did something similar. And I'd never heard of a Seven Up cake. Yeah. And the kids have perspectives too about what I had on my table. So, and we had a lot of conversation about sweet potato pie versus pumpkin pie, important things like that.
Great debate.
You bet. The great debate, the great debate. So, yeah, I'm just, I'm grateful tonight to piggyback on what you were saying, Ms. Stacy, that I'm here to have this conversation. And I have no doubt that this school board has worked very hard to be transparent, to welcome community input. And I hope they truly believe that. Because that's how great districts get great and stay great, is when we have the community support like we saw tonight, where we have people coming in and pointing things out that we didn't see, and even district folks didn't see either. And, you know, so we're all here for each other. That's my story, and I'm sticking to it tonight. Thank you.
Just like she's sticking to 25.
Thank you, Ms. Thor. Listen, Elena, happy birthday again. I know you've heard it from all of us, but we truly appreciate everything that you do for us as board members. When we need something, you get it for us most expeditiously. And you make us look good. So, all of us. So, I truly thank you. I personally thank you as the chair because you really made me look smart. So, but thank you. And more happy birthdays. As Dr. Gullett mentioned about the transition back from, many kids are transitioning back to school from the MCPS Online. I want to thank our staff that are handling this huge caseload that they've been given the past few days. And they are tackling it, and they are doing an excellent job. And I do understand that it is stressful taxing for our staff. But I also want to remind them that it's also stressing and taxing for parents that are bringing their kids back. And it's also stressful and taxing for the kids that are coming back. So, I want everybody to kind of be aware of that. I say that from a personal standpoint. As you all know, my son was in the MCPS Online. He wasn't failing in classes, but he was wanting to get to high school. And yesterday was the first day of high school for him at Vanguard. And as we were, I was taking him to school, he was like, you know, Dad, I don't know what's going on, but I'm, I feel like I'm nervous, I'm anxious, I'm like, it's like it's the first day of school for you. And I want to commend the office staff at Vanguard High School, the receptionist and the young lady in there. I challenged them yesterday. Because sometimes you need to challenge folk when we go to visit campuses to make sure that they're doing what they're supposed to do. Not to be mean or anything, but just to see if they're doing what they need to do. And I challenged them. And they responded the way that I wanted them to respond. And they may have thought I was being rude, but I was just testing them. So, I want to tell them, thank you, they did a good job. But my son, and I got down the hall with him to the guidance council, and there was a line of kids that are coming back to school. And so, that's a good thing. I want to encourage them to do their best. I want to encourage the schools to keep them as safe as we can. We know that we can't prevent everything, but we want to continue to do what we can do to keep them safe and to help them to get back on board and to try to get to some sense of normalcy in this whole process. It's been difficult for everybody, everybody, the community as a whole. And I want to tell our teachers and our schools and our bus drivers and all those folk that have been dealing with this thing for months and months and months on end, thank you, thank you, thank you so much for what you're doing. We do value all of our employees, every one of our employees, we value them. And as you said, Ms. Stacy, we can't, you can't put a price tag on what they are to us and what they are to this community and what they are to our kids. So, thank you so much for what you do. Ms. McCall, thank you for bringing Sanford Harmony up tonight. I think we've all been thinking about this one. One of the things I could always hear ringing in my mother's, hearing in my ear from my mother is that charity starts at home and spreads abroad. That was one of the earliest lessons that I can remember from my mom. And that meant that you learned how to treat people right in your household, and then it carried over out into the streets, went into schools. And the lesson started at home, but it got reinforced at daycare. It got reinforced in the classroom and kindergarten and so forth throughout our education process, our matriculations. So, I'm looking forward to us talking about this more, exploring this. And if it's not legislated that we have to do it that way, I would just love to see us modeling right behavior. And, you know, people seeing people treat people right because it's the right thing to do. And not that we have to be, it has to be in a curriculum. That, to me, that takes away the heart of being, treating people right. So, but I'm looking forward to where we're gonna go with this because we do need to look at it. And we do, and we're in a different age. We are definitely in a different age, different time and place. And so, we really need to have those conversations and parents. I'm gonna say it again, charity starts at home and spreads abroad. And so, that's where it starts. And we, when you send your kid to school, we'll reinforce what you, if you're teaching them the same thing. But we're not going to get into certain things where the school district is teaching those things. So, thank you for that. I'm burnt out. I'm burnt out with the elections. I'm burnt out with all of the, everything that's going on.
Thank you, everybody.
I'm just burnt out. And I'm being honest, guys, because I think a lot of people are. And it's starting to show in our community. It's starting to show in our staff. We're seven days away from the election. After the election, we're still gonna be in this country, win or lose, whoever wins or lose. So, we still need to work together. So, we have to get back to doing the right thing, going back to what we were talking about all the time. Makes no difference who you support. And I'm just waiting, I'm just ready to get back to us doing, not us, because we do well, but our nation, our community. Because we're so divided right now.
I think there's a lot of people turning the TVs off these days.
Yeah, yeah.
I've had it. I've got a headache, and I think that's the reason I have a headache. Unplug it.
It's just time for us to start healing and do what we have to do for our country and our communities. And that's what I'm looking forward to. What is it gonna look like on November 4th? We're still gonna be plugging away at Marion County School Board, trying to make our school district better. Our teachers are still gonna be on the job. Our bus drivers are gonna still be driving the bus. Those are the things that matter. So, again, please don't get fatigued and stress out and lose it at the end. We are close to the finish line. And I promise you, I believe that it's going, things are going to be better. Win or lose, whoever is, is the winner. I just believe that. Because that's what we do as people. We come together and make the right decisions and do what we have to do. So, with that being said, Chief Graham, a fellow law enforcement officer, and let me say this. When I got the news, we were doing a Souls to the Polls event, and I got the news early. And it was like, don't say anything, don't tell anybody. His family still doesn't know yet. And I reflected back to, he and I often talk to each other in the morning or text each other in the morning. And I text him, my last text to him was Thursday morning. He had just got reappointed to his position last Tuesday night. And I had told him, hey, man, I'm sorry I couldn't make it. I wanted to be there to support you. And let me say this, we didn't always agree on everything. But that's the good thing about people. You can disagree with people, but you don't break the relationship. And that's how he and I were. We generally had friendship between us. And I said, hey, I wish I could have been there, but I'm happy for you. I'm looking forward to all the things that we're doing. Because we're doing things outside of the school district in our community. outside of the school district in our community together. And I said, I appreciate everything that you're doing. And he texts me back, he said, Reb, I appreciate you, too, and I'm looking forward to many more years of us working together. And I instantly went to my text and just looked at it, I was like, man. And I know the pain that his folk are feeling over there at OPD. I know how I felt just hearing it. So I want to ask our community to please, I know we're in a midst where people are always talking about defund the police and all that stuff, whatever. You need the police in your community, you need the police, you need law enforcement, need structure. But right now, they're hurting, they're hurting, and we need to support them and show them that we support them. Board members, I did get with Mr. Christian about us doing a letter to send over showing our support from the Marion County School Board. Our police chief, our state schools director, Mr. McFadden, also is doing something as a fellow law enforcement officer to send over to show that we support them. Oftentimes, we have officers in here. So as we get through this, and our prayers are going with OPD, I also text Sheriff Woods, because I knew that they were close, and just told him, I said, hey, man, I'm praying for you, because I know as a friend and a mentor, it had to be I for him as well. So let's continue to pray for them, let's continue to know that we're gonna get through this. I think, Dr. Gullett, there is a delegation of us that are going to the funeral on Sunday, on Friday morning, 10 o'clock, on Friday morning at First Baptist. So OPD, you have our regards and our condolences, our deepest sympathy. So with that being said, so, before addressing expulsion matters, I wish to acknowledge that board members have received alternative placements list for students through October 6th, 2020. Ms. Martinez-Lopez, are there any parents who have submitted a time request to speak on the child's behalf?
Yes, sir.
May I have a motion to approve expulsion of student JD 21002 with educational services for the remainder of the 2020-2021 school year? Moved by Ms. King. Second by Ms. McCall. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by aye. Aye, unanimous. There being no further business, may I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Moved by Ms. Thor. Second by Ms. King. Meeting is adjourned at 6:42 p.m.